All right, so I'll call the planning.
Wait, let me get to Jeff, excuse me, I just want to get the live stream going.
Oh, all right.
There's Barbara.
Is Barbara on now?
Yep.
She looks like she's in a rose garden.
All right, let me just go over the rules, Jeff, and then I'll turn it over to you, all right? So, good evening, everyone. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of April 14th, 2020. The meeting is taking place via a Zoom format. Chair of the meeting is Jeff Pritchard. The co-hosts of the meeting are Diane Glombosky and me, Deb Jones. Kara Hovland is also attending to take minutes. She's also on staff with Planning and Development Office. So, just as a reminder, anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking. The panelists in this webinar are the Planning and Zoning Commission members and planning staff. Remember to raise your hand when you want to speak, and you'll be called upon by the chairman. And I'm going to mute everyone once we get going, and so you will have to raise your hand. For voting, to make a motion or second, raise your hand. Jeff will acknowledge you, as well, same process for a second, and then he'll call a roll call vote, so we can record everybody's votes. Applicants are going to be unmuted by the host when their application is up on the agenda. So they'll be able to present their application, present plans, answer questions. They'll be able to share their documents on the screen. And as a reminder, the applicants should also state their names prior to speaking each time. The attendees in this webinar are the applicants, as well as any member of the public who's watching at some point. So there are no public hearings tonight, so attendees who are not applicants will only be able to speak during public communications. So make sure you raise your hand, so we can acknowledge you. So you will be, as someone who wants to speak, will be called upon one at a time by either the host or by the chair, and will be able to speak at that time, and again, just identify yourself for those folks who are just listening in and not watching. And as a reminder, any member of the public can submit comment to the Planning and Development Office, and it will be posted on the town's website for any matter on the agenda tonight. So with that, I'm going to mute everyone except for Diane Glombosky and Jeff Pritchard. And... There we go. Take it away, Jeff.
Okay, so the first... So I'm opening the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First item is a roll call. I guess if everybody's muted, they can't say it, but we got Michael Kane is here, by Alzad, Barbara Tarbox, Sue Sutherland, Stefan, Steve Hudecheck, Evan Pitfall are all here, so everyone's present. Our regular members will be voting tonight. No public hearings.
Uh-oh.
I got moved.
Sorry, there we go, sorry, guys.
Approval of Minnesota meetings. I will move to accept the meetings of March 24th, 2020. Is there a second?
Alzad.
Alzad. Al, are you seconding it?
I will second.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have any corrections? If so, raise your hand, so we can recognize you. Looks like everybody's quiet. I just had a couple of administrative issues. Under roll call, can you identify the alternates for members present? So it's obvious who's voting and who isn't voting. That's on page one. On page two, paragraph, on the seventh paragraph, starting of a Davis review, you have an abbreviation of HIF. Could you spell it out? Unless you find it somewhere else in that section, I didn't see it. Because you shouldn't have a, the first time you have something in there, it ought to be spelled out, and then put parentheses, HIF, and then you can use it afterwards. And on page four, under the adjournment motion, you've got Pritchard seconded by Kane unanimously. Those are just notes, I think they could just be eliminated. Because you have the box that says who moved it and the voting results. I think that's the easiest thing is just to leave. Does anyone else have any other corrections? If not, we'll vote on on the corrections. I mean, on the motion as amended. Can we just raise hands, all those in favor, raise their hand? If everybody has access. Or do we have to go down the?
It looks like, help, are you voting in favor?
Can everybody see the raise hand function? Doesn't it just stay, does it just stay up, or?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing everyone voting in favor.
Oh, all right, okay. So it's, I just figured that's easier than trying to go around and unmute.
Yep.
Re-mute. So it's, then it passes unanimously. Next item is Public Communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? If so, raise your hand for recognition. Does staff have any correct, any communications?
No.
Is anyone? Any attendees have anything they wish to address the commission on tonight?
I am not seeing any hands up.
Okay. Because they cannot, just as I reemphasize that they're not allowed to speak during the regular part of the meeting. The next action item we have is site plans, SIT 20-02, Central Hall Carport and Storage with a CAM for the applicant. Please make his presentation.
Yes, the applicants are present for the project. The applicants for the Central Hall Carport and Storage are Greg Fettis, Peter Springsteele, and Ken Navarro. And they'll be present in presenting the application.
Yes, Greg.
Oh.
You are unmuted.
All right. Good evening, commission members and staff. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, in office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut, here presenting the application for Central Hall and the Central Hall Carport and the Tiff Building Storage Building. All in one application. We can start with try to figure out how to, I did this earlier today, now I can't do it. To share. I need to share, share the drawing here. Oh, it's a little different than what I was doing earlier, but let me see. I don't see the share thing.
Do hover at the bottom of the screen?
Okay.
There should be a green button that says Share Screen.
I don't know why I don't see it.
What are you, what device are you on?
Laptop.
So with your mouse, just hover at the bottom?
Nope, that's not me, is it?
So what are you trying to share?
I'm trying to share the site plan for the carport.
Okay, hold on a minute. So it is carport, hold on.
There you go.
Can people see that?
That's the Tiff Building, there it is.
There we go, thank you. So we're proposing of a carport off of Gravel Street that basically covers the driveway. Basically, it's going to be utilized for drop-off and pickup and deliveries, small vehicles. Mostly weather events, or elderly folks, or people that just need to get closer to the facility, or closer to the Central Hall Building. Because the parking is remote. So the 24 parking spaces for the 12 condo units, nine are located at the pump station parking lot, and 15 are located at the Tiff Building parking lot behind the Tiff Building. So there's a bit of a walk, a little closer for the pump station folks, but if you're bringing groceries, or deliveries, or dropping something off, or dropping off company, basically, the carport will keep you covered and protected during that time. Previously, we had a trash enclosure there. We've moved the, we got rid of the trash enclosure and actually have trash areas inside the building. So I think that's a benefit of the carport, as you can see in the diagram down at the bottom, the carport detail. We are a very tight area. We did get variances for setback issues, both front yards, both side yards. So those were granted by the zoning board of appeals. Unless there's any specific questions about the site plan, I can pass it on over to Peter Springsteele, who will talk about the the architecture of the carport.
Hi, this is Peter Springsteele, architect. And Deb, I don't know if you can bring up the architectural drawings?
I don't have the architecturals for the carport, I only have them for the Tiff Building.
Okay. I don't seem to have a share button on my screen either.
Oh, because there are attendees, you need to...
Maybe I can allow you to share, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's probably what the problem was more. I'm promoting you to a panelist, Peter.
And promote Greg too.
Yep.
Now I'm a panelist, okay.
So now you should be able to share things.
Let's see.
Oh, there we go.
Are you seeing the architectural?
No.
I don't think we're at it yet.
It says that you are.
We have to...
Do you have to allow them, do you have to allow them to share, Deb?
You guys are, have all the... Hang on.
They aren't showing up as panelists on my list.
They are.
They've been taken off attendees.
Oh, I have share screen now at the bottom of my panel.
Great.
Yeah, so I'm into the dialogue box here where I can share, but I'm not sure how to get something to show up on there.
Is it on your desktop?
Yeah, it's on my desktop. And it's giving me choices here, but they don't seem to open up, it's funny.
I think people have the architecturals in their, in their packet.
Oh, there I am.
Hey.
So do you have architecturals on paper you can look at?
Does everybody have a packet they can look at?
I didn't print mine out.
Peter, if you want to email them to me, I can probably share them from my office.
Okay.
I can just hold them up.
There we go, perfect.
So Pete, you can start talking, maybe.
Yeah, I'm just bringing up mine, because I can't see that too well, let's see. So essentially, this is a canopy structure. There's not a solid roof on this, there's a fabric roof, sort of an awning fabric. And then it's elevated about 10 feet, so that we can get vans in there to, when we need people to service in the building, they can have taller vehicles get in under that canopy to park. Essentially, there's six columns. They're fairly slender, but they're more, they're somewhat traditional-looking columns to keep in the context of the building. And the awning fabric will be similar to the awning that's on the building. On the very end of it, you can see there's a car under there, you can then get a sense of the relative height with that car there. And it basically takes up the whole area of the service driveway there, except if you look at the plan view, which I think Diane's not holding up at the moment.
Maybe I can share?
That's the, that's the site plan view.
Right, so if you look at the blow-up at the bottom there, in the lower right-hand corner of the footprint, there's sort of a cutout there that's not covered, and that what came about as a result when we went through the variance in working with the neighbor of that adjacent property, they were concerned that it was too close to their property. So we worked with them in order to get that approved in, at ZBA. So there is a little bit of a cutout there. And that end of the carport is not for vehicles, that's more of a pedestrian end, and we've got a little fenced-in area there that can house bicycles or carts for people to bring things up to their apartment. There's also a fence that runs along that southern property line, and it's built out of sections that are removable, so that the neighbors can service their equipment from our driveway side. So we recognize that they'll be using that occasionally to service their equipment. And that's essentially it, unless you have questions about it.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing this site plan, so you can move on to the next bit.
I can share, if you want me to go to the the car...
The Tiff Building?
Yeah, the Tiff Building. I can... Let's see. Is that on everyone's screen?
Not yet.
Yeah, all right. Well, there we go. How about that?
Coming. There it is.
We got it? Okay, so I'm just gonna, so this is the 36-44 West Main Street, which has access off of Pearl Street. It's the parking lot behind the Tiff Building, which is located on West Main Street. We, we also got a variance for this, this storage addition, which is shaded here, I'm going to blow it up. Move it around a little bit here. So it's basically attached to the back of the existing building. There previously was a larger storage building located in this general area here above the parking that we tore down back, I want to say 2016, '17, maybe, at the request of the town. We had always planned on replacing it with a storage building. So this is the proposed building, it's a little bit smaller than the original building, it's a little bit further away from the property line. We did also get variances for this. And we also, I'm going to let Peter go into the details of it, but we originally had 20 parking spaces behind the Tiff Building. So with, with the addition of, with this small addition, and then you can see right in this area, there's a proposed 12-foot emergency fire access that extends from Pearl Street, and basically winds right through. There's a proposed swing kind of removable gate that will allow fire access, through fire access to the adjacent properties, and ultimately ends up on Gravel Street. So previous, the previous approval had a little smaller fire. I don't know if I'd call it a lane or not, but it was a little bit of a spot right here where that one is, and where the chapter one's dumpsters are. There was a little bit of a, like a, like a fire lane, I wouldn't call it a full lane, because it didn't go all the way through. But we were successful in getting fire access all the way through with that gate. So smaller vehicles can get all the way through, their larger ladder trucks will basically be able to get into the site, but will have to get, get back out onto Gravel Street. So we, we still have, we have 19 spaces, previously we had 20. So part of our request here is to, with the new zoning regulations, is validate for the retail. So that would be 100% of the requirement for the retail units. There's four retail units on the first floor, and then there's five one-bedroom units located on the upper floors. Those spaces we're proposing to give them Mystic Art Association passes. So the five would be over there, and the 15 spaces would be for the condos over at, from Central Hall. So 15 spaces plus nine at the pump station. That's, that's not changing on the plan. The only change would be, previously we had the five residential units parked here. Now we're going to have them parked over at the Mystic Art Center. I think the staff's preference is that we park with the remaining four spaces. We park them on the Tiff lot. However, even though our preference would be to keep all five spaces residential in one spot, we currently do that with the, what we call the Ice Cream Building, 2-6 West Main Street. All of the residential units there have parking spaces at the Mystic Art Association, and it's been successful for the last 10 years. Even though we're not required by the current zoning regulations to provide spaces for the retail, we are, in our leases, providing one space per tenant, which, since there's four tenants, or four retail tenants, we'd like to keep them on this lot versus splitting up the residential. And I know, I know staff preference is probably the other way around, that's how historically it's been, but I think it works best for our retail clients, and I think the residential clients are okay with, you know, they know upfront they're going to be parking across the street, and it's actually closer than the Ice Cream Building. So we don't foresee that as a problem. And I think that's it from a site plan standpoint, unless there's any questions.
Did you want to say anything about your CAM applications?
Sure, we are... Well, the, the current CAM application kind of covers both areas. We, there's really minor changes regarding especially 36 West Main, it's relatively far from from the Mystic River. The best management practices for erosion control, we really aren't disturbing a lot of area. If you look at, the proposed storage building is 23 by 16. That, we're going to put flood venting in as a request, I think, from, I think it was a staff request, maybe, from the ZBA application. But we're not necessarily required, because it's just storage. It is below the flood elevation, so we are putting flood vents in there. The, the parking spaces, as they are today, are gravel, that just be kind of bordered by a cobblestone or a brick border to kind of outline them. As for the carport, really, we're just, that's already kind of approved, the only thing we're doing is putting a cover over the, over the already approved paver driveway.
Is that it, Greg, for?
I think that's it, unless there's any questions, be happy to answer it. Peter might want to show you the, the architecture of the storage building. We can bring bring that up, I'll stop the share here. If we're good on this site plan, I can always bring it back up.
And again, I'm not sure how to get the...
Let's see. Here we go. How's that?
There we go. So you can see in red where I've highlighted the addition, because it is attached to the existing building there, this is not a freestanding building. The one that used to be there was freestanding, but this is attached. So there will be some fire code requirements that I have to fulfill when I attach a building, which we'll take care of. It's a one-story building with a little bit of an overhead in it, and what we're going to do with that overhead inside the building is use it to store the flood panels that we have for Central Hall. So they'll be stored nearby Central Hall. And those are the flood panels for the commercial spaces down on the first floor of Central Hall. And then at the, at the basic entry level, there's a door at each end, and there are 12 little storage cubicles that you can see in the floor plan down at the bottom of the sheet there. So there'll be one for each unit in Central Hall. The architecture of the addition is similar to the architecture that's there now. There's a one-story bump out on the back of the building right now, and we're just sort of mimicking that to keep it in context. And then there's also in that plan, you can see there's a rear exit door from one of the retail spaces on the left, and there's another one on the right. And we're relocating those from their existing position in order to accommodate the storage building. But those rear exits will still remain, and there's little canvas canopies over those exits. So that's really it, and as Greg mentioned, we're putting flood vents in, you can see them on the floor plan and in the little section. And there's a calculation for the required flood vents. So those are provided.
So can we move?
So can we move to the staff?
Yes.
Presentation.
Deb, do you want to do the draft motion? We can discuss things off the draft motion.
Sure, I do. Central Hall, there it is. There we go.
So basically, I think we sent out the draft motion today for the project. One of the things, the first thing, the item on the agenda is your decision should should the for extra spaces or the spaces at the Tiff parking lot, should they be for the residents? The residential units at the Tiff building? Or should they be for the commercial spaces at the Tiff building? So as as Greg talked about it, he's proposing that the five residential units that are that are at the Tiff building, they be parked over at the Mystic Museum of Art with a leased space. So that's one thing you should decide on. We would be recommending that the spaces be used for the residential units, at least the four spaces that are there. So that's item number one. Just item number two is any parking validation needs to meet the zoning regs. It's it's laid out with a lot of detail in the zoning regs. The new zoning regs on what they have to do if they're doing validation as far as signage in the windows, signage at the register and also submitting that submitting a narrative each each January on how they are actually participating in that program. And then three is also the requirements for leasing the space and that's pretty much laid out in the zoning regulations. So that would just be number three in the in the draft motion. Four is just the general condition that basically says all the other requirements of the previous site plans. There's been a number of them and a number of modifications. They're all still in effect unless specifically modified by this site plan. So basically, all the conditions that they previously have for everything else on the sites are still still valid. Five is the the parking design at Tiff was basically reviewed by the Fire Marshal. And he's actually approved the design, but he also wants some appropriate signage and pavement pavement markers put in place prior to construction of the parking spaces back there. So that's number five. And then staff technical items be addressed. One of the items with the with the CAM application with the motion is it's just the condition to make sure that the coastal access signage is appropriate and is incorporated into the the area getting the public from gravel street up to the deck behind Central Hall. They will not go through the carport area. They it was never proposed for them to go through that area. But they will be going through the pump station property to get up to the ramp that gets up to the deck. So we want to make sure there's appropriate signage in there so that the public realizes that they can get to the deck from gravel street. So that's just the motion for the CAM application. So I think
Been given a copy of this?
The applicants have been given copies of the motion, yes.
You had something else, Diane, or?
No, that was it.
So then I'll open it up to the commissioners for any comments or questions. I'll just go down the the order we have on our listing, not proceeding order nor normally you. First one is Michael Kane. Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I know I do. So when I'm looking at the pull it back here again. With the Tiff building, the concern I have is the let's let's describe it as the southerly row of parking. The two new proposed spaces. They seem a little bit isolated, but the one that's sort of or difficult to get into, I should say. So if you go from the right to the left, one, two, three. That third space, which is existing, the line for the parking space isn't drawn on the on the on the plan that I have here. And I'm wondering what happens when you actually put a car in that space or a or a small, a large vehicle. It's gonna impede the ability of cars to park in those two new proposed spots. Because it's actually gonna go out further than what you're seeing. There's no line there at this point. Are you following me?
Yeah, okay, you got it up. Yeah, it's Greg Fettis. Yeah, those. So we do have the, I don't know if you can zoom in on that area, Deb, or I can share mine.
I think Greg, that my issue is is that if you were to show this with cars in those spots, it would look different.
Yeah, I I would agree. Those two spaces, we do have 24 feet back to that space behind it. It's not 100% ideal. And I don't think it was 100% ideal previously.
I'm just like, my concern mostly is the third spot. Which is gonna get its corner clipped when someone's trying to park in there. I don't know if that one should be like labeled a smaller vehicles or or something like that to sort of like reduce its
Vulnerability. Yes, we could, we could, we could probably label that one as a compact car site.
I think that it probably would if it was if anybody can park in there and you got a big vehicle in there, it's really gonna impede the ability of anyone to park in those other two spots.
Yeah, I think we can do that and I think we can limit the size probably on all three of those. They are, it was a challenge. It was a challenge. What was approved? What was approved previously was was borderline and I think we and you know, with with getting that fire access lane in there and it was just we kind of did the best we could. I I agree, they're tight. They're not ideal. But again, it's the same people parking. You know, we have a little bit of control over those spaces, so I think we can accommodate a smaller car in that.
So is there a need for any handicap spots in this new in these new parking spaces?
Oh, yeah, we never had one before. You know, the spaces, I guess, that are that border the access, the fire access lane could potentially share the share the access lane and we we could make one of them accessible. Well, you know, I don't, the previous approval didn't have it. I'm not sure what the conclusion was back then. But we kind of went with with what was approved previously minus one spot.
Right, that's that is a concern of mine. But and then the other question I have is when when we're talking fire exit access, is it from both Pearl and gravel or is the are the fire trucks supposed to move in one direction?
Actually, from both sides. So I think the larger vehicles and Tony, Tony and Fritz are very aware of this plan and very aware of their access from gravel, which is not not the greatest either. It's a little, it's better than Pearl Street because Pearl Street's very tight coming in. It'll be from both sides. It it kind of depends on what the call is. And
So I just want to make sure that that's
Larger vehicles will come in from gravel. Smaller vehicles will will can come through either way.
Okay, so long as the fire trucks can get in. And then I have one question with regard to the carport. It appears as if the these swinging doors are actually, one of them is actually swinging right into the car. So it seems like it's very, very tight space to try to to try to get out of a car, to open a door, to do anything. I'm just wondering how this is gonna work.
Which which swinging doors are we talking about?
It's showing proposed carport. They would be at the back of the building. It shows some sort of a swinging says hinged gates typical. And and one of them is swinging into the right front fender of the car.
Are you looking at the architectural?
I'm looking at the architecture. I'm looking at the carport plan, it says.
Okay, that's probably Peter's.
I don't know if that's Peter. Peter probably would might be able to address that better, but
Well, I think those swinging gates are the, you know, are are only going to be swung open when the person working on it is there. Not they're not, they're not available to the public to be swinging open. They're just there for maintenance of the adjacent properties.
Yeah, I guess I just thought I understood that it was that this was gonna be like for service vehicles or people coming in to offload things. How are they accessing the building?
The Central Hall.
That equipment. Is that what those gates are for is to gate in the mechanicals?
Down in this area?
You want to share yours, Greg? So you can have some control over?
Yeah.
This carport plan.
I can't share.
It actually shows the car, a drawing of a car in the spot.
Can you bring up Peter's?
I don't have. I don't have his architectural, yeah.
Shoot, all right. Let me, let me just see quick if I have it.
I've got it here. That helps.
Yeah, that's, let me just, let me see if I can bring this up quick.
Oh, sorry, Peter.
Okay, here I am. So those gates, there's one gate at the very end of the carport near the Central Hall main building there. That's an egress gate. There are no vehicles will be able to get up to that end of the carport. That gate will always be able to open. But then the gates that are essentially a fence on the southern border, those would be removed for servicing the equipment. So a vehicle would have to be moved out of the way in order to do that. And the intention there is for people to just park there for 10 minutes. There'll be signage, you know, that it's unloading only, cars will be towed. It's just a 10-minute drop-off area.
How how big is that space? Like, it's hard to, even when I blew this thing up, I can't even.
It's about 12 feet wide, which is, you know, a big parking space width. By, I think it's like 35 to 40 feet long, so only the half near the street will be utilized for vehicles. The other half is cordoned off for bicycles and a pathway to walk to the building. Okay, so no vehicles can get to the end of it.
All right. All right, I'm I'm fine. Those are my questions. Thank you, Pete, Peter.
Do you have any thoughts on the parking spaces behind the Tiff for the use, Mike?
Not not the four, I would like to see them used for the residential. But other than that, I'm I'm fine with the way.
The question of whether it's residential or retail use.
Yeah, I would like to see it used
For residential.
As residential use.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, can we move to Hal Saad?
I'm trying. Here we go.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I can move backwards through the items. Is that frankly, I can see benefit either way, whether it's the residential use or the commercial use. There's gonna be supplies coming in. There'll be, I'm trying to think of which will have less of an impact on these fairly miserable little parking lots. So maybe maybe I have to bow in favor, go in favor of the residential use just because of the kind of vehicles and how often those vehicles were moved. Not whether I care whether the residents would use it or the commercials, the commercial use would use it, but what would be there? And if I'm a commercial use, I'm not going to have a minivan, a tiny little car. I need something of some decent size. The tendency would have to be for larger vehicles because that's what they have and that's where their space is. So I would only for that reason, I would just think I think I'd rather have the strictly the residential use. For the I am concerned with those parking spaces. I mean, I was looking at those parking spaces too, and I think the one parking space that doesn't have the lines. I'm not quite sure how, we're talking about the two parking spaces that were sort of recessed to give the 24 feet behind it. Next to it, there's another space. With a car in there, I can't see any way that those cars can maneuver in and out of those spaces. But then maybe it was horrible before. And maybe it's more horrible now. I just, I I don't understand how you could actually maneuver a car into that. That's anything bigger than a Mini Cooper. I I just can't imagine it. So maybe I'd have to, yes, that space there you're pointing to.
Yeah, this one.
If if there's a 16-foot regular width car in there, how does the space just to the right of it, how does a car get into there? They can't, they cannot make the turn. I I don't know how to do it. If it was completely open on the right-hand side, which, you know, completely open through the other parking lot, I'd understand that. It would take some doing. But once you fill in a a square that looks like a car, maybe the one that's closer to the fence, I suppose that would be okay if he backs out carefully and has done this professionally for a while. But understanding, I understand how in an urban area, you've got some really wacky spaces and especially things that are in the basement of a building, it could be wackier. That one, I can't figure out a route to get that car in if there's already a car parked in there. So maybe I just need to see that clarified to say compact, but I'm not sure what that means. And I would actually think that you just need to actually cheat that that last space to the south a little bit more. If you just got a little paved area, just give some breathing room. Maybe that space just has to come inboard a bit because I I just don't understand how it works otherwise.
Well, I think if this, it's Greg Fettis again, if this this space is occupied by a smaller car, a vehicle can come in and swing closer to this space up here and swing into that spot. I can, I can put a turning radius on it, but I, you know, 99.9% sure that we can swing into there and and get into both spaces is again, is it ideal? No. It wasn't ideal before. I think we didn't make it worse because we lost the spot. Believe me, I tried to get 20 spots back when we when we were given this task of trying to create a through through fire access. And obviously, we are putting the building there. But I I think it, I think it does function, not again, not ideal. And if, yeah, the same people are parking there every day and it's not, you know, if if you had the public going in and out of those spots, I would, I would 100% agree. You have the same people parking in those spots all the time. So they're designated spots for designated either retail, hopefully, if you guys can see see that way. But if they're residential, it's gonna be the, it's gonna be assigned to apartment 1A. And, you know, we'll we'll work our best with our with our our leases to to have the smaller cars in those three spots. Knowing they're not ideal.
Well, yeah, ideal is, we're not working the ideal world here. I I get that, but I think I'd I'd rather see some notation, maybe we'll call that a technical item where. Well, yeah, i- ideal is, we're not working the ideal world here. I, I, I get that, but I think I'd, I'd rather see some notation, maybe we'll call that a technical item where where the dotted line or something, some, some line on there designates.
Well, I can definitely, I can definitely add, I, there should have been a parking stall paint line extending, um, extending up here.
Right.
And then we can show, you know, if we took this 12-foot wide, uh, we could show a dash line coming into both of those spaces.
Alright.
Um, we can definitely do that as a technical item.
In fact, I'm looking at, maybe you can map out. I mean, if this, if this were a, a, a tractor-trailer arrangement in here, you would map out exactly how the tractor-trailer would do the same thing for a car.
Yeah, we can do that with a car.
I don't care if he's gotta back up and make a K-turn, but something that makes it clear how that actually works. Rather than have it not really work and have them come up with something on their own, which we don't want them to do.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Alright, and I take it for the, uh, the, uh, fire department access. They're not, you're saying the fire department looked at this and said it's okay, but I take it they're not expecting to get a hook and ladder in through that because.
Uh, they are expecting to get a hook and ladder in from gravel street and they would actually, um, they'd have the ability to pull, you know, we showed, we showed that lane up here on the adjacent property.
Yeah.
Um, this is the chapter one boundary here, which currently we're working with them to kind of rearrange their stuff back there in order to make this all work. Um, but they can get a hook and ladder in from gravel street and they'd have the ability to kind of pull straight. They wouldn't be able to make turns, but they'd be able to get in pretty close in order to, to deal with the fire in the back of the tiff building.
Alright, so it's, it's not, they weren't expecting to be able to make this entire serpentine just to kind of poke their head in, alright.
Absolutely not. Poke in one way and, and be able to get through with smaller vehicles from Pearl Street through to gravel.
Alright. Okay, and with respect to the, uh, the carport, I'm fine with it. I think, uh, Peter spruced it up a bit to make it match what you've got there. Um, I can see where, so long as it's, it's signed appropriately being a 15-minute or 20-minute, whatever it is, and um, I don't think I'd wanna dissuade pedestrians from accessing the building that way because without a car in there, it's absolutely going to be the way that everyone wants to walk in. It's gonna be a big welcoming thing with a sign on the top of it that says that it's central hall, so. Don't wanna force people to walk around it, there's no need.
Well, I think it, it, it's really just a, a, a very short difference. They're gonna be walking, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, but the, or Diane, they'll be walking between the pump station kind of, and the transformers here. There's a wide sidewalk, eight to 10 feet wide that would lead you right to the, the ramp associated with the public access. So I think we, our, our residents would go through under the carport. For the most part, we're not gonna invite the public to go that way. But, you know, obviously, yeah, some, someone might, someone might do that.
If there's a drop of rain in the air, they'll go through that way. I'm, I'm already sorry to see the loss of our continuum of, uh, canopies in the front of the building, so that, this is a welcome addition for that. Um, is there any concern about we've got a little slope roof, which will be dumping that much more stuff on the adjacent transformers, I don't care, but the things that are against the building, is that condenser units or something like that? What, what is those?
So, um, Peter Springfield, um, yeah, that came up during the ZBA, uh, especially with the neighbor next door. And the, um, canopy actually has an internal gutter that's hidden behind the balance and that gutter will pick up water and snow and will be able to drain that water down to the ground. Um, so that there'll be nothing coming off the roof onto anybody else's, uh, equipment or property.
Okay. What's, what's the lighting like on this thing?
What was that? How?
Light, lighting? How is this thing lit?
We'll have, uh, some lighting under the canopy, downlighting.
Alright.
We don't show it here, but it's, uh, it'll be cut off and you won't be able to see that lighting from, uh, beyond the building.
Alright, I just wanna make sure it's not, not flush with it, but way up, you, it, it's just hollow inside there, so far up inside the canopy would be a good thing. Alright. Uh, that's all for me, I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, Barbara Tarbox.
Hi. Um, I have a kind of a general question about parking. Uh, will any of this parking be assigned parking? The residents of the apartments, um, will they have spots, whether it's at the pump station or anywhere else where it's going to be their space?
Uh, Greg Fettis, uh, yes, there'll be assigned parking spaces for, uh, the central hall, the 24 spaces for central hall. And again, the the tiff building as you, as the, the commission decides, uh, they'll be, they'll, they'll all be assigned, basically.
So, if a certain store, say Satface, which is one of the stores.
Yeah.
Will it have its own designated parking space?
Their space will be over at the art center. So they'll, they'll.
Okay.
Yeah, the retail spaces, we, again, we're asking for, um, to com- per the current regulations is that all of our stores at, at central hall will be validating. However, we, we, we feel, or in my client feels, as the owner of the building or owner of all their retail spaces down in uh, downtown Mystic, is that they should provide every tenant at least one space. So, and that space is gonna be, uh, over at the art center of, for central hall retails, retail stores. So theirs will not be actually assigned. They have a pass, they just go in and they, you know, wave their pass.
Yeah, I, I understand about the, I, I understand about the art, art parking. Um, but I'm thinking about behind the tiff and wherever else the residents, are they gonna have, like, you know, number 16 belongs to so-and-so?
Um, it'll, they'll specifically be for central hall. I believe we are gonna assign them specific spaces. Um, so 15 of those spaces that behind the tiff building will be designated for central hall uh, apart, or condos. Are they gonna? I don't, I don't know that they're gonna be specific, but most likely they will be because otherwise it'd be very difficult to control. I mean, the, the entrance to Pearl Street, the, to the parking area is gonna be gated, so in theory, you won't be able to get in unless you are, you have a pass to get in.
Okay. Um, I'm agreeing, I think it should be for residences too, not, not retail. That's all.
Okay. Should we move on to, uh, Sue's other one?
No, I'm okay, it looks good, thank you.
Steve, hold a check. Steve?
Ryan, there we go.
Oh.
Um, I just had two questions. There was a debate going back and forth about whether this was gonna be for residential or for retail parking. But I mean, if you're gonna have a gate, I mean, how would that work?
Well, they'd have, uh, fobs to get in whoever it was. So.
Well, for residents, but, uh, I mean, if it's re- I mean, you'd have to give those out to everybody, uh?
Oh, no, it'd be for the retail, so for the, like, say the owner or an employee, key employees of the retail store, so they would have a specific, they have to show up every day to the, uh, to work. And they, they would, yeah, similar to residents.
Alright, and then just so I understand, the the part that's appears to be, is that brick, um, in between the parking spaces?
Yeah, so it's either like a cobblestone kind of border or a brick border.
Now.
I'm not, I'm not sure that.
The whole area that's shown with the pergola, is that just that square? So the whole path is not covered?
Right, the whole path is not covered. Uh, so basically, it's, it's kind of a, if you stand over at the carport, you can kind of look through and see your destination for the parking and vice versa. Um, just kind of a, almost like a, I don't know, Peter, you got a better word for it? Like a destination or?
Yeah, wayfinding device. You can see the carport from there and then from the carport, you can see that little pergola, so it connects the properties visually.
And that kind of brick, uh, brick path, kind of yellow brick road kind of takes you between the two. And we have an easement for that through that park, or through a pedestrian easement through that.
Yeah, it just seems, you know, when you have, when I see the existing, um, or the path that, uh, fire access is gonna be, proposed fire lane and that path, it just seems like there's, you know, some wasted space there, but I guess it'll work.
Well, that, now that area is also the, the 24-foot aisle way for the parking on either side for three gravel. Um, so it's kind of multitasking. Um, pedestrian walkway through there, access to, to the parking spaces north and south of it. And then also it'll be a clear area for, um, for fire to come in and out.
Okay. Alright, yeah, and I'm fine, uh, you know, the, the rest of the parking stalls, I agree that they're tight, but there's not much you can do about it. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thoughts on the, uh, parking spaces residential versus retail?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, the, uh, the other, the other stalls that we were talking about.
No, no, A or B? Do you wanna have the, on, on the first item on the motion? Should the spaces be for the resident, behind tiff, residential or for retail?
Yeah, I, I would definitely keep it residential.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
No, I'm good.
Kevin?
I'm sure. So, um, first to answer the question, clearly residential, not commercial. Um, and then the only other second question has, can I see the, um, the carport? So when you exit the carport, which I presume you're backing up, um, cause it's a one-way, right? Is the sidewalk on that side or just on the other side of gravel street? Are you backing up into a sidewalk or is it just on the other?
Uh, there is a sidewalk on that side, so you would be backing, uh, across the sidewalk. But that, that use hasn't changed. The only difference between the approved plan and this plan is we're putting a, a cover over it. So it was always des- uh, it was always destined to be a, a drop-off.
Yeah.
Spot.
Yeah.
Again, downtown, not ideal, but.
Well, I get that part of it. So do you have any of those, um, mirrors? Just cause I, I know I back up very poorly, Greg. It's a weakness.
Yeah. Um, we could definitely look at, uh, putting a mirror. I'm, I think there was one there at some point, but,
Yeah.
um, but we can definitely look at putting one uh, somewhere that would allow you to see people, I guess, walking or, or traffic.
Yeah, I'd agree. And other than that, Jeff, I do not have any other questions.
Okay. I just had, uh, two items. On these parking spaces behind the, the tiff, are they gonna be well-defined? Cause it's tough to put paint marks on the gravel. Are they gonna have a individual sign in front of each place?
Number on it? So, uh, yeah, so the, so that you can see the, the hatched ones up here and over here are actually stone, uh, with the border, so they'll be very well-defined and we'll have of, kind of although we don't show it, there's signs there now that clearly show what, what space is for what. Um, and then the ones down here are in, on pavement, on, actually on vituminous concrete, so those can actually be striped clearly.
Mm-hmm.
And these two down here would be, again, the, the border. We call out uh, soldier course, so Belgian block or jumbo paver, so, um, though, it'll be clear, it'll be much more well-defined than what is there today.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure, cause there are not very many, not much area behind there.
No.
And people will cheat, cheat on it. And I think for the comment on the on the walkway and putting a device, even though it sounds a little foolish there to find it, is if you didn't do that, people are gonna encro- crouch on the walkway.
And you. Yes, that's a good, that's a good point.
I think it was a smart thing to do it. And on the, uh, Aryan Building for stor- on the central hall for waste storage, where, where are those places gonna be? The ones that you eliminated, the dumpster to allow.
Or, they already exist and they're off the public access deck on the back of the building. There's, uh.
Are those those little white doors that are in the backside? Or are they?
They, they're off the residential. They're off the residential entrances when you walk back there. There's some residential entrances, there's two of them back there, they're recessed.
Yes.
The trashroom doors are off those recesses.
That's what I was wondering whether that's what they were, that's what they were. Cause I took a walk down there this afternoon to check it out and also, that's all I had. Uh, does anyone have any other questions or concerns that we have to address? If, if not, uh, and does the applicant have any concerns with the, uh, proposed motion?
Well, I think, I, I think I might be, uh, barking up the wrong, wrong tree here, but, um, we, we still, we still would like the retail, you know, cause there's four spaces left, there's four retail spots, there's five residential. We just think it's, it's best, we, we feel like the, uh, the retail folks are, are moving about a little bit more than the residential. They typically, the residential come home, leave in the morning, come home in the evening and that's probably it. The retail may be in and out a little bit more, so it just might be more convenient for them with the four stores. Uh, the retail folks pay higher rent, you know, that, now that that makes a difference to, to maybe this proceeding, but, uh, you know, we just think that it's, it's, it's the right thing to do for the, for the retail folks. And, and we've got some history with the residential parking over at the Mystic Art Center with the, the ice cream building. Um, and it works. You know, my client has four or five different buildings downtown and um, they're very aware of what the needs of their residential tenants are as well as their commercial tenants. And we, you know, we prefer not to be tied down to, to the residential folks parking there.
See, Halzad has a question.
Yes, so.
Actually, I'm just, I just put my hand up because I'm noticing Michael Kane has been raising his hand ferociously there, but fit, but with his actual hand, so I'm just.
I'm not finding my, I'm not finding my, uh, raise your hand, uh, I need a little tutorial here.
You've got a quick, go on, participate.
If I could, may I ask just one quick, that, because it was said that, that this is just the same as what we had before, but with the roof, but we also have the fence that's being added. And one of the architecturals actually shows a human standing next to the fence, which is entirely hidden or would be hidden by the fence. So I'm, just, I, I guess I'm sort of, uh, also, uh, what Kevin, uh, had mentioned, his concerns about backing out would also be people who are walking along that sidewalk are not gonna be seen behind that fence.
So, the fence, uh, the fence on the transformer side, which is the north side, steps down to, I believe, four feet at the end.
Yeah, that's what it said.
Yeah.
Is that, are both of those fences, is that something that's absolutely necessary? Is that, are both of those fences, is that something that's absolutely necessary?
Well, we're trying to create a, uh, a nice feeling as you walk through that carport, because right now. When you look to the, to the left, you see all those transformers. And it's kind of not, uh, very attractive, so we're trying to screen that out. But they do drop down as you get closer to the sidewalk, so.
Could the one that is, uh, what would be to the south be made, just that last section be made four feet? It looks like it would still. Though, still, uh, high transformer, but it might give at least an adult who was walking there. Ability to be seen.
Yeah, that one could probably be lowered.
Maybe we could do that as a technical item. That would, that, I think that would be a benefit. I, I mean, as long as, if other people think, think so as well. Though actually, that's. It, it might help a little bit. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody has? If not, I'll make. A motion, uh. To approve SIT twenty dash oh-two site plan modification for central hall for eighteen dash twenty-two West Main Street. And off-site improvements at thirty-six West Main Street, subject to the following modifications. One, a minimum of four parking spaces for the residential units at thirty-six West Main Street. Shall remain on-site. Two, the parking validation for all. Commercial uses shall meet. I insert zoning regulation, section eight point two dash six point E at all times. Including all signage requirements and annual proof of participation submitted to OPDS. Three, all leased parking spaces shall meet section eight point two dash six point F of the zoning regulations at all times. Including the submittal of annual renewals to OPDS. The current lease documents for all spaces shall be submitted to the Office of Planning. And Development Services within sixty days of this approval. Four, all conditions and requirements of previously approved. Site plans for eighteen dash twenty-two West Main Street and thirty-six West Main Street are still in effect unless specifically modified. By SIT twenty dash oh-two. Five, the parking plan for thirty-six West Main Street requires fire marshal. Approval of appropriate signage and pavement markings prior to start of construction. Six, staff technical items shall be addressed on the final site plan. Is there a second? Can you raise your hand for?
I see Halzad raising his hand.
Okay, you seconded again, Hal.
Trying to get there, Hal. Don't know where my cursor went. Alright, Hal, you're on.
Okay, yes, I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Does anyone have any dis- concerns with the, uh, motion or comments?
I would just like to comment that. Um, with regard to the lowering the fence, I'm looking at the rear north elevation at carport version of that. And it looks like the fence is in question. Stop, well, within ten feet of the edge of the building. So it really wouldn't change your view at, into people crossing on the sidewalk.
No, I, that.
Michael Kane?
Hal, I, I understood that, but what I was also thinking was that, uh, it actually, if someone is. The view from the car, but the pedestrian would be able to see the car moving before it got to the end is what I was kind of thinking.
Uh, I don't know, I suppose if they look around the corner of it.
Well.
Alright, but, but I, but here's the saying, you're just saying, reduce that last panel, like at the column.
Yeah, from the column to the street. It was, it's just the last section and it would equal the opposite side.
Right, more or less.
If we leave it as a technical item, then it's just in the minutes.
That's correct. Okay, then I'm, I'm agreeing with that then. Alright.
Any other comments? If not, uh, we'll vote on approval of the motion. All those in favor, can you raise, raise your hand? I mean, uh, well, maybe it's easier to raise it visually. Rather than click it.
I'm not finding mine.
What you do, what you do is go down to the very bottom, Michael. And then your screen will pop up and it'll say sixteen participants. You click on that and then it pops up whether you're muted or you can raise your hand.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you, Kevin.
Well, have all those in favor raise your hand.
Alright, I see Sue Sutherland, Halzad, Michael Kane. Um. Jeff Pritchard? I don't know what Jeff is.
And Sue.
And Barbara.
Right, Barbara, yes.
Sue is, Sue is raising her hand?
Yes, Sue Sutherland was raising her hand.
Literally.
And virtually.
The motion is carried unanimously, proved unanimously. Alright. Tough working on all these electronic systems.
We'll get there.
Then I'll, I'll make a motion for the CAM to approve the coastal site plan application for SIT twenty dash oh-two. Based upon the following findings and conditions. Commission hereby finds that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and policies of CGS. Twenty-two A dash ninety-two and incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity. And both coastal resources and on existing and future water-dependent re-activities. I so move. Sir, a second?
Michael Kane?
Michael Kane, seconded?
Yes.
Any discussion or concern with the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the CAM. All those in favor can raise your hands.
Alright, I see Halzad, Michael Kane, Sue Sutherland, Jeff Pritchard, and Barbara Tarbox voting in favor, raising their hands.
Okay, looks like it's a unanimous vote. Is approved unanimously.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Are we good to sign off, Deb?
You are. I was going to kick you out if you don't.
Oh.
Unless you want to go back to an attendee and watch. You can certainly do that.
What's on next?
Barbara, did you want to lower your hand?
Alright. Alright, now.
But you had something to say or?
No.
Oh, can you lower your hand?
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Okay, next item is Cutler Elementary School Rooftop Equipment Screening, one sixty Fish Town Road.
And I am promoting all of these folks to panelist, uh, Rick Norris. Kurt. Joe Banks. Is there anyone else associated with this that I need to promote?
Did you put me up or?
I did.
Okay, I just don't see it on my computer. It's okay, thank you.
Then if the applicant would. Please make his, his presentation.
Hi, this, this is Rick Norris, Department of Public Works. We have Kurt Whipple to help answer questions and Joe Banks, the architect who's going to do the presentation, so. I'll turn it over to Joe and let him run you through the changes and the things that he deed, did. To, uh, uh, ameliate any, uh, visual impact of rooftop units, so, Joe.
And he's muted, Deb.
He is, uh, oh, he is, look at that. There we go. And Kurt is also unmuted.
Okay, good. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna share my screen in a moment, but I think that you guys all received. The, uh, the revised materials as well as the video walkthrough. Of the, uh, of the proposed screening. Diane, you, you shared that with the commissioners?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So I was absent from the last meeting, I apologize, but Mike Berger and Kurt and Rick. Uh, let me know the commission's concerns regarding this, and so the steps that we took. Are really, uh, twofold in terms of changes to the building. Um, I'm going to go to the roof plan right now. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'll zoom in on the areas in question. So the first area that was of concern. From what my colleagues, uh, suggested to me. I'm going to mark this up as we go, was as you're coming in the front entrance to the building. There was concern about being able to see some of the rooftop equipment and so forth. That's, that's a bit further back. Um, what we did for one thing was to relocate. Uh, a screen here, kind of a low screen. I don't know if you guys can see that on my screen. Uh, but that screen is roughly in this area. Let me widen it up a little bit so you can see. So it's in that area. The other thing that we did is we went back to our engineers and asked them to rework some of this ductwork. That was on the, on the rooftop that was closer, uh, to the edge here and could have been seen perhaps. So they complied and they, uh, they gave a change order, which is a bulletin that was issued to the contractor. So that all of that stuff winds up behind this, uh, three-foot-high tall screen. The other area that we learned that the commission was concerned about. Was the, uh, screening on the very high roof. What we did is we took that a little further this direction. Let me see if my pencil still works. So we took that further this direction and we made a return on it. Pardon my digital drawing skills. This is not my, uh, my usual medium here. So in this area, we expanded that and returned the leg there. As, uh, I think you saw in the, uh, the walkthrough, both the one with trees and the one without trees. Uh, we, we think that that, that screens it pretty much from every place that the commission was concerned about on the site. Uh, with the commission's, uh, permission, I'd like to run that video now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So what you're seeing on your screen right now is coming from the far corner of the site at the roadway. As we're coming back towards the back of the site essentially to what will be home plate. Of the. Uh, ball field. You see that approaching here? So I'm going to pause it here to show the edge of the rooftop screening here and this down below. Just so you can identify it as we go forward on this. This is at the rear parking lot, so this is the area where we drop off the really little kids. Who have their own entrance at this portion of the building. This is coming around to the front. And again, based on Diane's feedback, she also wanted to see the views as you sort of backed out through the parking lot. This, of course, will be the way that most people access the building from the parking lot, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then what you're going to see is walking basically on the sidewalk alongside of the road. And looking at the building as you're walking along that sidewalk. Oops, I guess we have more parking lot to go. Okay, so now we're going back out to the road. Moving along the sidewalk and looking back at the building. I should mention also that we, uh, do have a version of this with the trees that we intend. As Diane pointed out, I think in her email, of course, the trees will not be the full height as we're showing them. Um, when they're first installed, and that's one of the reasons for us to do this, uh, walkthrough. Without having any trees obscuring the way. But of course, there is the landscaping that we showed you the last few times. Okay, so that is the, that is the video. I can certainly show other things, but, uh, at the commission's pleasure, I'm happy to also entertain questions about this.
Does the applicant have anything else to add or? If, if not, we can move on to, uh, staff if they have any comments.
Sure, no, we have nothing further to add.
Do you have anything else to add, Diane?
Uh, just, um, from a staff standpoint, it looks like they, um, basically. Uh, and the commission can tell us whether they've met the, um, concerns that the commission had the last time. Um, as, as they did the video, you can see that, that you will still be able to see that rooftop equipment. On the, on the four-story building from, you know, the baseball field and potentially maybe from that small parking lot. But other than that, it looks like it's screened, um, from the major parking lot and the roadway. And then the entrance to the school looks like what they've done, um, screen set equipment on that lower, um. Single-story roof area. So we're okay with it. Um, the one thing they, the motion will have is basically. You never know what's going to, you're going to see until it's built. So there's just a little caveat in the motion that basically says if there's any major or significant, um. Mechanical equipment still visible, um, that they potentially will do something to either paint the roof or whatever. I mean, paint the equipment or whatever. So that's the only caveat we have in the motion.
Is the applicant, uh, been given a copy of the motion?
Yes.
We have.
Do they have any comments or?
I don't, Rick or Kurt, do you have any comments?
Um, no, the town, town has no comments.
Okay, so then I'll open it up to, uh. Who the commissioners, were any questions or comments they have? We'll start with Michael Kane.
There we go. Alright, so I guess, uh, Diane, you said paint or whatever.
Oh, sorry.
Is paint, is paint what we would do?
I think.
And are there other options, I guess?
I, I mean, they could make the screen taller, um, or something like that, painting, yeah.
I mean, this, the screen is engineered to the building at this point. It seemed like anything other than paint is going to be. Uh, like, like a physical screen would be, enlarging it would be difficult.
Right, that's why I put paint there, I think, at that, at this point.
Okay, I would just be, I, I would assume that we're not going to have whatever written into the.
No, no, the actual.
Well, you saw the motion, didn't you?
No, I, no, no, I know. It's just that, uh, I wouldn't want anyone to think that there was something else that. No, I know. No, I know. It's just that I wouldn't want anyone to think that there was something else that that maybe would be better if we if we can identify that, that would be helpful if we are gonna limit ourselves to paint, then that's probably probably where we're at. That's those are my only questions. Otherwise, I think we've done about as good as we can do with this at this point.
Okay. All right. Hal, Zad, does you have any comments?
Yeah. Let me do the second one first is that the at the actually at the end of the video, the very last few frames, where it's looking at the southwest corner. I understand that a lot of that view eventually will be pretty well screened by arbor vida or pine or whatever whatever plants you've got out there. And I say eventually because the first 15 years, they won't be. But that view, as you come up the road from the southwest, we're still looking very clearly at the mechanical units off of the service entrance. Quite honestly, if this was a service entrance in the back of, you know, Big Y, this is what I'd expect, but not a school. So it's not much of an area. We're still kind of looking at those units.
So let me know if the protocol is appropriate for me to respond or if you.
You can respond to that.
Go ahead. Okay, okay. So I let's see if I presenting my screen. Let me do that as well. So Mr. Zad's comment is about this view, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, right. And there there was quite a bit of back and forth between our landscape architects and the and staff in terms of what this is gonna be. I can show you what the eventual intention is, but I think your your point, Mr. Zad, is that that is gonna be partial screening until those till that landscaping actually grows to its full height.
Correct.
Accurate, yeah.
That's right. And quite honestly, the screening at that point could be very modest in order to kind of hide those. But I don't think the landscaping is going to do it. At least not for a long time, not till the kids going to the school are already in high school.
Now, by by units, there actually aren't units here, but it's the, for instance, the vent from the kitchen that you're seeing.
I guess what for the vent? Well, there's another hooded unit to the right side there. There's something there.
Let's go back to the roof plan here so we can be clear about that.
Oh, yeah, there's a there's a big unit there.
Well, the right, this is this is a this is for makeup air and these are the exhaust hoods.
Right.
Here and here. But the main units, they're heating and cooling everything back here behind the screen. Would it be helpful to see the walkthrough with the trees or is that not not something the commission's interested in right now?
I'm not that interested just because as as we're both recognizing, that's 10 years down the road when it really looks like that. Actually, looking at the tree vision, tree view, if I'm judging the deciduous trees correctly, either the the walkthrough the height of the viewer was set at one foot off the ground, or those are some of the biggest trees I've ever seen in my life because the canopy was up 20 feet in the air. So there's not a lot of accuracy on that. But I respect the idea that this was supposed to be a lot of I didn't look up which plants it was, but they were clearly evergreens going around it.
Yeah, let's take a look at that.
But there weren't space so densely that in the first five years of this, it's really gonna do that much of a job of screening it. It'll take quite a while.
Keep in mind also that there is a elevation drop from the road back to the service area. As I recall, it's between four and five feet. So the road is four to five feet higher than this.
All right, that might make the the one-foot-high viewing point correct, actually, so.
So my recollection, I can go to the planting plan here, but my recollection is that we've got kind of this wall of low. These are inkberry, another non-deciduous holly-based. And that these, you know, we're trying to get the larger street trees here as well. But it's a combination of things that will things that will come to their full screening capacity early as well as sort of fill in later. Take a look at that in a moment.
TGG, are those the inkberry?
I believe so.
Okay, and those aren't very tall.
There we go. Proposed hedge.
We're not seeing that, actually.
Yeah, hold on one moment. That's the grading plan. Here we go, planting plan. Don't make anybody dizzy here. So we have 38 IGs, 12 TGGs, evergreen, and then the street trees.
So the TGGs, if those are the inkberry, I'm not actually seeing your you got, oh, yes, you're looking at the planting plan. I'm looking at two. So the 12 TGGs, if that's the inkberry, so those are a lower hedge, right?
Not sure that lists his species here, but yeah, that was that was my that was my memory there.
My thought of inkberries as being shrubs.
Yep.
And then the he has those are some kind of pine, right? I don't know.
On 507 is the plant schedule. There we go. Oh, no, it's TGGs or the arbor vida.
The arbor vida?
The IG are the compact inkberries.
Oh, okay, got that backwards then. Look like really big inkberries, but so they're the compact inkberries. Are they particularly tall? I don't think of inkberries as being tall. I think of them being shrubs.
They are. They are shrubs, but they can get to five to six feet. I've got a couple in my yard. And again, that with the
Right.
grade difference between those two. We the landscape architects and staff felt that that was.
I think that'll do a nice job of of screening the trucks and the service area, but not a rooftop units that are what 16 feet up? As you come around that corner, not not quite not quite meeting the specification.
This is Diane. What about, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. What about also that area, if there's any significant mechanical equipment on that roof to actually paint it? Would that help?
Not for these units, for the great, great big condenser units that are, you know, 20, 30 feet across, big boxes that I'd get. But these are oddly shaped little things that are just sticking up. And it's the kind of thing that doesn't look good to anybody but the mechanical engineer.
So would a screen be better? Is that what you're looking at or is it?
Yeah, I think it needs some kind of screening.
Just a small screen there?
Very, very small and maybe even local, but it needs to be just, you know, just around the units, but we don't want to be looking at that. And the neighbor shouldn't have to look at it. Nobody should be have to look at that. And that's all I've got. I didn't have one question. I just noticed that the I know this, we're not covering signage with this. But on your presentation on the drive on the fly-through, it had the one sign by the main entrance set 90 degrees vertically that just said Cutler. Has that been approved or is that something you just kind of threw in as an example of something? I don't want to.
No, that's that's in the that's in the documents, the construction documents.
That's in the documents? That's our sign for our elementary school? That's it?
That's the signage on the school. My understanding is that the if there is site signage, that's gonna be handled by the town. In other words, a sign that that announces it to the road. But yes, that's the that's the signage that's on the building mounted.
Okay, well, I'm I enjoy the cleverness of the graphics and whatnot and considering all of our other schools, I I can't, this is a little off the wall for me. If I have a business, I'd love to see it done this way, but for a school, it just has to say Cutler Elementary School in plain block letters facing the right way. You've got wonderful of wall planes to put it on. And to squeeze it onto the side of the corner that way, I can't see.
This is the main entrance to the building, by the way.
Yeah, I get that. But it's also just as cutler. And we don't just say Fitch and we don't just say northeast. We we every one of our schools has a pattern and that's one language thing that should should keep in mind. The street sign should be similar. The sign on the building should be kind of similar, not not this cute. So I'm not in favor of that.
Anything else, Hal?
No, that's it for me.
Okay. Barbara Tarbox?
Yeah, I'm glad that Hal pointed that out. I hadn't noticed it before and and I I agree. I I don't think that belongs on an elementary school. I do appreciate the changes that were made to the to the top of the roof, both roofs. You know, a little harsh in my comments last time, but this seems to be much better. Hal pointing out the service area problems, I do think that needs to be screened as well. So I guess I'm basically agreeing with with previous comments. I don't have anything terribly original. That's it.
So Southern?
Yeah, hi, Susan Sutherland here. Um, yeah, I appreciate I think the the videos are very helpful, actually. I think that was good. And I appreciate what you've done to try to mitigate the issues the commission had. So I'm okay with the changes. I think that's appreciate the work. Everybody's done on this.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Steve, who does check?
Yeah, I I like the changes that were done to the roof, but I would concur with the signage. Not a fan.
Just I had a comment from Rick Norris. He said that that actual sign is a placeholder right now. The actual sign hasn't been, you know, needs approvals from the town. So they're still working on signage on the site. So potentially that will change.
Okay. I have no comments.
So Rick will make it look like the other schools. Kevin Fittfall?
Okay, so I'm unmuted. So I actually like, Joe, what you did because with the video because it provided this the walking scale for us so that we could see essentially what we asked in our last meeting. And I thought that was actually great. The backside, the service entrance, I believe what we stated last time is the preference for all the the views other than the the service entrance. So that wasn't high on our list, and it still isn't as far as I'm concerned. I think that part of it, you know, growing up in a, you know, industrial fab world, you know, that's we had everything on the outside. That doesn't bother me. I think, as I said, that's that's what you have in in that part of the school. It's not your your educational side. So I think it actually looks good. I have no problems with that at all. And but I agree strongly with that, what everyone else said, and appears that Rick is gonna do it, is that we need kind of the same naming convention, whether it's, you know, the graphics or whatever, but that really does need consistency across the school. So as Rick goes to design that as how it indicated, I'd love to see Cutler Elementary School be up there. That's it.
Okay. You just said.
I'm seeing Barbara Tarbox and Hal Zod with hands up.
Oh, go ahead.
Hal?
I just want to mention that I understand the placeholder, but even the placeholder, since it's on there and nothing says this is a placeholder, we need to just pad that on the record of saying we are not approving this, not even not even the location necessarily of it. So there's zero things about that that are okay with this. We just need to make sure that's on the record.
If I may, Hal, that we can go ahead and take that off if you'd like. For example, on the middle school, we actually had to come back to the planning commission to get approval for the sign. So I would think we would need to follow the same process, but that's, of course, we'll have to work that out with Deb and Diane.
Barbara Tarbox?
Zad is is muted but was responding.
Oops. There he is.
Is it me or Hal?
I was just I was just finishing Barbara just Rick had mentioned rightfully so that we might have we'd have to come back and and approve the signage, but then it shouldn't have been there. Just me, it should have been just a blank thing with in which case I probably would have just said, and we don't want the sign there in a vertical way. So there's either removing it or noting it in some way clearly that this sign is not approved. I think that needs to happen.
Oh, could add that to the motion.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else have their?
Barbara Tarbox, are you finished?
No, I didn't even start.
Okay, then.
I was, I think this question is for Rick. I don't know what stage West Side is in, and I know that's in the city and they have their own own things. But is there any kind of coordination in design and design of signs and things like that with? So there's some, since these are town buildings, that there's some
Yes. Yes, if I can respond, Barbara, Rick Norris, yes, there will be. The buildings are similar, the signs we expect to be similar. We would probably have to do the same thing with the town, a city planner, once they have a new city planner. But we would look at the the thing, because if you looked at the last project series, if you will, all the signs were were similar across the town as far as the schools that were constructed at that period. So we would expect it to be somewhat the same.
Okay. I think we're looking for some consistency across the the school system.
Understand.
That's it.
All right, see, Michael Kane has his hand up.
So I just wanted to come back because some things have been raised since I spoke. But I I believe that Kevin is correct in that we weren't as concerned the last time about the loading dock. But I also do appreciate Hal's concerns as well. And then I wanted to make sure that all this screening is incorporated into anything that happens at West Side as well because to have anyone, someone else go through what we've gone through already with this. That's all.
Okay. I just had a concern for the. Drawings that were in our package. We had two copies of this drawing A one. In one of them shows. I guess the. Label for the barrier that goes in over the entrance way. And the other one doesn't. So if we make a motion. Which page are we approving? They both have. There's no page number on them. The dates are the same. And I think we've got to be careful. What are we actually? Motion signing up. What I can see is the only difference was there's a cloud put around the. Barrier over the entrance way with a name on it. Which was similar for what? But the other sheet shows the barrier but with no name.
I think the I think you're right, Jeff. I think this is Diane. I think the. The only difference is they they sort of bubbled the area on one of them of where the changes took place.
Is this the drawing?
Well, they didn't make the change on the one sheet doesn't have the change on it.
Well, let Joe explain it then.
Well, which one are we approving?
I don't know. Let's just let's have Joe explain it.
Shouldn't have drawings out with different on their description.
So can you help me? I'm not exactly sure which drawing you're looking at. Can you?
Eight dash one ten. I have two copies of it. That are slightly different, both dated October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And one of them. Shows the screen. They both show the screen. One has monocle on it, but they put a bubbles around it. And the other one doesn't.
It's it's the actual second one. There's a there's a revision date in the upper right hand corner. So there it is. It is the one that has the second revision on it, not the first revision.
Okay.
And I can't. I can't read the exact revision.
It says revision. Is it eight? It's so small. Well, when we make the motion, which one are we actually does?
We're gonna we're gonna make the motion on the the one with the two revisions on it.
Yes, that's revision eight. Eight or six, I can't.
I don't have large scale plans in front of me.
I know it prints it out, but. Well, whichever one it is, it would be.
Joe, do you have a copy of A dash one ten?
Well, he had it up there.
Yeah, I have it on my screen, so I think I might be able to address the confusion. So the.
Put it on the screen, please, Joe, because we don't. We still see the building. Or I still see the building, maybe.
I still see the building. I don't see that.
Still see the building. Okay, let me. Oh, it says my screen sharing is paused. Me resume share. Okay, can folks see my?
We're still seeing the building.
Still see it says my screen sharing is paused again. Okay.
That's video. It's.
Let me do a new share here.
Yes.
Okay. So these are the these are the revisions that were made to this now. So the the question I think was.
Now we're up to nine.
But this, these are the permit documents. Which Diane received. So the. The question, I think, is what version of this are you approving? We were obligated to bubble. The changes because this was a this was a change that went to the contractor. So they've got to understand we if. If we give just give them a new drawing, they they want to understand what's what's been changed.
That's fine. I just want to make sure I understand which one we're approving.
Yep.
I guess it's the one was was it? Is it eight?
It's the one with eight. Eight or Diane.
And what's the date on that?
It says oh, three seventeen twenty twenty.
Okay, so that's the revision date that we're approving.
Yeah. Normally, we only have one one revision in our package. Otherwise, you'd never notice that. And on the screening from the the road. I thought what was identified in a previous meeting was that the this zoning regulations required the rooftop equipment to be screened from the road.
That's correct.
And they didn't do that on this service side of the building. Because that's a view from the road, isn't it?
Well, they they added a whole bunch of landscaping there. So that was potentially some screening. That's up to you to decide if that's enough in this case, or do you want to have some physical screen on top of the roof?
And the screening is going to be. Evergreens.
There is evergreens along that service. Yes.
From the street.
Yes, so it's a mixture of evergreen shrubs, arborvitae and street trees.
Yeah, but the street trees for most part of the year don't have any any leaves on them, so. So. Deciduous. But I guess if there are varieties, or they're gonna screen it, there will be. So if you're driving along, you won't see it.
That's the intention.
I mean, they're they're gonna be that tall.
That's the again, that's the intention.
Yeah, does it? Does it specify the size of the trees when they're when they're put in?
Yeah, those are in our specifications, which I can share with Diane if you like.
Typically, typically, they're required a minimum of six foot high according to the zoning regulations for evergreens.
So six, six feet. If you're driving along, then they're gonna be. Really prevent your view.
It's hard to say at this point.
Well, you're sitting down fairly low. Assuming you're not. In a truck or anything that's. All right, that's. I'm just concerned about the 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 motion, whether we should amend it. To indicate the screening should be accomplished in that area. I don't know what the other commissioners feel like. Anyone have any any concerns with the way the motion is written right now?
I see Hal Zod with a hand up.
Yes, Hal.
And well, I think you know where I'm standing on this is that right now, my feeling is that. Well, two parts. Is that painting won't do it so that the the way it's written right now really won't do much. I don't think we need a four foot screen up there. We need some pretty nominal thing, but I think it needs something. And I understand the idea that we look at lots of other commercial buildings and from the back service area, you can see stuff. But this is a school building. It doesn't have a back. So I just don't think we should rely. On. Six foot initial are providing at any distance to hide something that's fifteen feet up on the roof. It'll be. It's quite possible that in ten years they'll have gotten sufficient mass to screen off anything. And it's quite possible that they won't. So they're have to provide a.
If I may, this is Rick Norris again. If you look at the plant schedule that he has up on the screen right now, our varieties, eight to nine feet.
As they're planted.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me get back to where they were. I just saw here. Oops, change the change the screen on me.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Zoom in.
Our bodies eight to nine feet height is what's required to be planted.
Okay. What's their spacing?
It's pretty tight. Let me show you again.
Looking at the plan view, they are they are pretty tightly spaced.
Sorry. It's a lot harder than flipping through drawings. Okay, here we go. It's pretty close placing.
Yeah, well, assuming those things are draw. I was looking at the gate and they look each one of those. I don't really think the scale this thing on, but. Those the the swings on those gates are. What? Six feet each? And so these things are drawn. It's being five foot diameter are providing.
No, the gates are quite a bit wider than that. We need a we need a typical.
That's right. So they'll be at least six feet, right? Maybe eight. And they're drawn almost that big. So your typical ivory writing, depending on the species. Is not eight foot wide. So you know, they're drawn at this maximum dense wall of it. Instead, we're going to have a lot of kind of slender little things. That said, he'll be looking at it at an angle. So maybe that would cover it. How about the inkberry? What are those? Because that's what you'll actually see as you drive up through the road. You'll be looking right across the service area. And so what are those specified at? Are those deciduous?
Those are not deciduous. Those are holly.
All right, that's right.
So those go in at thirty to thirty six inches.
Those are low.
Yep.
No, we'll actually be looking right across the top of those.
Well, that's how they're installed. They do grow to five to six feet high.
So five to six. And they're holly, so they're not particularly dense. I think I at least if I was more in favor of having. At least having the arborvitae extend a little more into where the holly is because that holly is not going to do it as you drive up the road. And that would do it for me. Like you want to, if you're desperate to avoid the the screening. Extending the. You're invited just a few trees more back farther back. So as you turn the corner. It'll actually screen the top. Otherwise, you will be looking over the top of those.
So so how to clarify your comment, you want more arborvitae to the south or to the north?
To the south.
To the south. Okay. Yeah, towards the toward where it says service on the south side.
Correct. Yeah, wrap it around wrap it around somewhere.
Yes, we can. We can certainly add a few more in there.
Add a few more of those and take out a couple of those at the the inquiry. And I suppose that would. That would work tolerably.
Okay, thank you.
See Susan Sutherland's hand up?
Yeah, just a comment. The inkberry is quite dense. Actually, I always vote for inkberries and they do get to be about six feet. It's quite a lovely shrub with berries and all. So don't think that you're gonna be seen through it. It takes it a while, but they can be very nice and lush. That was it.
I've got them in my yard. I love them.
Yeah, I do, too. Same here.
Okay, so we could cover that as a technical item.
You will have to clarify what you want for the technical item.
Well, it's tough to say. I mean, we want the equipment screen from the road. I don't know how you specify it. I mean, as the drawing as it shows, are these. Where they show all the trees close together. Are they just counted by numbers? That are shown on.
They're shot here. Let me see if I can blow this up a little more.
No, I can see the drawing. I could. It's not a problem, but I mean, do they count? If you counted on that's what we get, or do you plan them as necessary to provide a real?
So what we bought from the construction documents is what you see, which is these twelve green giant arborvitae. And then these thirty eight inkberry that are running across here.
And what are the other ones where you keep going up around the?
These are evergreens here. I'm not sure. I can take a look at the planning schedule here. Eastern white pine.
Eight to nine feet also. If if I may, this is Rick again. We had a similar issue with with tree screening in the city. And not obviously not trying to tell you what to do, but they. Made it a technical item and had us work it out with the planners on. The number of additional screening trees that were required in that particular in a particular location. So. Just a suggestion.
Well, that's why I'd rather have it as a technical item.
Okay, so you want to add more landscaping, more evergreen screening in that area, and we'll work it out. We'll we'll come up with a plan. But you don't want to add any screening on the roof at this.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Yeah.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
That's what I was thinking was the best way to do it is. We live it that way rather than trying to rewrite the motion. And then having to come back again. So does anyone have any other comments? The applicant have any concerns with the way the motion is written?
Um, no, we're we reviewed it. Then I think we're we're happy with it. We knew we'd have to potentially do some other things which. We were willing to do so.
Yeah, it's hard to to tell what has to be. Accomplished to satisfy the requirement.
I understand.
So. I'll make a motion to approve the following modifications to the rooftop screening at Cutler Elementary School on sixty Fishtown Road that was. Approved as part of SIT nineteen fifteen. One all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened as provided for in the narrative plans and videos made part of the PZZ. For ten twenty twenty PZC that's agenda and presentation. Any rooftop equipment that will sing still be significantly seen from the main parking area or Fishtown Road. After construction shall be painted to match the proposed screening roof or building facade as appropriate. Any requested changes to the screening requirement shall be reviewed and approved by the PZC. Prior to any installation. And nine and two, I want to add staff technical items shall be addressed on the final site plan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move and second. Does anyone have any? Comments or concerns with the motion is written? Hearing none will vote on the the motion for. Screening on Cutler Elementary School. All those in favor say aye of like raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Or you can say raise it. I don't care.
I see Michael Kane, Hal Zod, Jeff Pritchard, Barbara Tarbox. That's four. Hal's odd. There we Sue Sutherland. Thank you.
Okay, so it's passed unanimously. Okay, so it's passed unanimously. Move on to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consideration.
We'll take care of the the signage, Rick.
Um, yes, that'll be a separate item.
Will be a. Okay, next, move on to commission reports, report of chair. One item to bring up is.
We missed, Jeff?
Yes.
You have to go back to new business, we missed the.
Oh, no applications, I'm sorry.
And then the referral.
Well, we jumped right down. Oh, I'm sorry, we missed all of them, the business. That was it for our big audience, no business, no applications. Do we have any new applications?
No, we don't have any new applications right now.
And no referrals, and we have, we do have the one referral for CGS eight twenty-four, referral for thirteen Port Hill road land transfer.
Right, so this is the former Paquonic Bridge Volunteer Fire Department. You recently approved a site plan for the New England hemp farm for that property, and during that application, you became aware that there was a small thirteen hundred square foot piece of property on the southern end of the, of the lot that historically had been used by the fire company. But no longer, no longer was part of this lot. There was a reverter clause when the town sold it or gave it to the fire company. So once the property stopped being used for fire protection, it automatically reverted to the town. So the new owner is appraising the property as we speak right now, and has asked the town council to transfer the property to him. Back to the site plan, you may recall that the town signed that application with the understanding that the applicant was going to ask for the transfer of the property. So in your packet, you do have a small map showing the area. It has historically been used by the fire company for parking and for storage, and it looks to be part of that property. So this referral is for your input as to whether or not the land should be sold.
Does anyone have any concern with the proposed sale of this land or transfer? I guess really it's just a transfer of the land.
The council has not decided that yet. They'll decide.
Commission. And we have to give an advisory opinion on whether it's in accordance with the P O C D or any other concerns. Does anyone on the commission have any concerns of the town proceeding?
Any guidance as far as how much is going to be sold for? Is it a dollar? Is it?
We don't care.
And I don't know that yet. I don't know that yet. They have not completed the appraisal. They started the appraisal process just when the COVID nineteen stuff hit.
Yeah.
So it won't go back to the council until we have the appraisal. I mean, I, I think the owners would like to sell it for a dollar or buy it for a dollar.
Yeah, but our concern is really is it.
That's right.
According to our P O C D.
Right, whether it should be.
Or whether we see other use for the land that the town should not trans, sell the land or transfer. That's all we're commenting on. Does anyone have any concerns with it?
No.
None.
I guess we should, a motion to get back to the council saying that we consider the transfers in accordance with the P O C D and have no additional concerns.
Right.
I'll make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? If none, all those in favor of the motion, would you raise your, raise your hand, literally?
I see Michael Kane, Hal Zod, Jeff Pritchard, Barbara Tarbox, and Sue Sutherland.
Okay, I'll caution this carry now. Harder run these meetings. Okay, that's it for new business, commission reports. Report of chair. I only had a concern when I was catching up with some of my old homework and putting in the, the change to the zoning regulations. I saw there was nothing on and indicated a revision date or revision number on any of those pages, which in the long run is going to be a problem. Since these are the specifications that we work to. So I would think they have to either be reprinted now, or the next time the the revision comes out that they be added to that to add the approval date. Otherwise, a year or two years from now, somebody could easily pick up the wrong pages. Or not know their book is correct. Because all the original ones do have a possibility on them.
There is a list of amendments at the back of the document, but you're right.
Nothing to say what amendment it is. If you look at all the other pages, they say effectively.
Okay.
It should have, and I don't say they have to be done right away. We wait till the next printing of a change, because that will, it will be obvious they'd be the only ones that would come through with nothing on them. But after you get a few changes, you're not, it's not going to be obvious what's what. Does any, reported commission, does anyone on the commission have anything to report on?
No.
Report of staff.
I don't have anything. Do you, Diane?
No, I don't have anything.
Does anyone else have anything? If not, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second, it's what, nine twenty, nine eighteen, about nine eighteen. So the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Struggles. Another Zoom meeting. Hopefully next time we'll be off Zoom.
Next time. Not next time.
No.
Get this for a while.